Simple shit, or is it that you don't get shit by me?
Oh, is Rick coming over here?
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, why move it over again? In the place where everyone's home.
Oh, wait, you have little dreams of Christmas.
Oh, great.
Check and see what's in.
All right, we're going to go ahead and excuse Kevin for the study session tonight. And move into a presentation on the future ready goal number two of the district strategic plan. Do you want to introduce the speakers to everyone?
Yes, I'm happy to, but first I want to draw your attention to your board calendar, just so that as a reminder that everything that we're doing now in terms of the new strategic plan is aligned to the board calendar. So if you look up at the study session topics, you've had an overview of the strategic plan. Beth Dykman and her great team have already presented on goal one. And now is your opportunity to hear about goal two from our executive lead, Sarah O'Donnell, and she's joined tonight with Dr. Gina Larber, now Alicia Malding from Crestwood Elementary. So again, just like we studied at the board retreat, we're really trying to align everything to your work, to our work, and to the work in buildings, to the work in classrooms. So everyone's nice. Yep, there you go.
There we go.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you so much for having us this evening. And we look forward to having not only just a presentation of information, also a discussion. And there is going to be, just as a anticipatory set, you are going to be expected to review some data. So there will be discussion this evening as well in terms of notices and wonderings. So we're excited to hear what you have to say in terms of what you notice and what you wonder about. So thank you for having us. And so we're talking about goal two this evening, nurtured, engaged, and empowered students. And oh, there we go. And so if you think about our promise in our strategic plan, by having an intentional focus on systems and strategies that support a nurturing, positive school environment, we know that all students will be known, valued, and supported. And so really, when we connect goal two to our strategic plan, this is about my kids and supporting them like you wouldn't believe. So we have. Yeah, there we go. I got it. Yep. We'll see how we do. So the relationship to future ready. When you think about goal two, every student will attend school regularly in a supportive and challenging learning environment where they're empowered to exercise an active voice in their own growth. And there's two specific goals that we're going to talk about this evening. And so the first goal by 2026, 95% of students will attend school daily. And then the second goal by 2026, 100% of students will feel that their school is safe and welcoming as measured by perception survey data. And so because we've got two really distinct goals, we're actually going to have two different segments to tonight's presentation. So we're going to focus the first part of our presentation on attendance and the second part of our presentation on really the social emotional supports that we have for students, making sure that they feel safe and welcomed at school. All right. There we go. It worked. Maybe I'll change my angle a little bit. That way it will work. So when we talk about equity, every student receives fair treatment, personalized support essential for their social emotional growth and cognitive development. When you're talking about systems to support good attendance, eliminate barriers. That's what we're talking about here is that fair treatment, the personalized support, as well as the social emotional support as well in terms of kids feeling safe and welcome. The next slide. There we go. We have a number of board policies that this connects to. And so you can take a look at those at your convenience because really we want to dig into the meat of what we have this evening. And so when we're talking about the pillars, goal two, really those building blocks for action, we're talking about what's in the circle there. So positive support network for students and families, partnering with community partners that we have to support social emotional health, as well as if you look at the bottom of that attendance campaign for that goal two. Witness gracious. There we go. All right. So at this point, we're going to head into attendance first. So that's the discussion for the first part of our presentation. And so using our structure for our presentations, what do we need to know and be able to do is our very first question that we ask. One of the pieces that we need to remember is that there's a difference between truancy and chronic absences. So truancy, as you can tell, this is where we count only unexcused absences. There's an emphasis on compliance and school rules. And this is where we rely on legal and administrative solutions. This is where you hear about the BECA petition and maybe community engagement boards and having to possibly go to court. And so that's that truancy side of things. But where we want to focus this evening is on chronic absences because there's a significant difference between truancy and chronic absences. Chronic absences means that we're counting all absences, excused, unexcused suspensions. And what the concern is, the emphasis that we have is on the impact of missed days because if kids aren't in class, if they're not in school, they're missing out on education. They're missing out on the learning opportunities and the consistency of learning opportunities. And so really, it's a proactive stance that we want to take in terms of using our community-based partners, using our systems within our buildings to really support good attendance as well as identify barriers that might need to be addressed in that supportive stance. All right. So one of the things I want you to notice, you are going to be hearing quite a bit about what the elementary schools are doing this evening because we've got some pretty amazing things happening with our elementary assistant principals because they're doing some real amazing work with gathering baseline data on what's going on with the elementaries to really influence and impact that chronic attendance concern that we have. But please note, we're talking about elementary tonight, but our goal is K-12. And our secondary schools are doing amazing things as well with attendance. But we're excited to share with you about what the elementary assistant principals are doing to especially impact elementaries. It's one of those that if we had hours and hours to present, we would have a secondary piece to this as well. But we thought it would be really kind of neat for you to hear what's happening with our elementary schools and what the assistant principals are doing. So there's a reason why Alicia Malding is here. She has really taken on some wonderful leadership in terms of organizing and supporting this work. And I'd like to hand it off to Alicia as an assistant principal at Crestwood Elementary.
Yeah.
And so when we're ready, do you want me to take care of this? Would that be helpful?
There we go. All right. So this summer, our elementary assistant principal group got together to talk about various topics. And attendance became a really important conversation because we recognized that we were all doing something a little bit different. And we weren't feeling super successful in what we were doing. So we dug into the research and just realized that this has to be a top priority. It is so connected to our goal of 100% graduation. And some of the research shows that students who attend school regularly stay engaged, successful, and on track to graduate. Patterns of absenteeism actually start as early as preschool and kindergarten. So you often hear parents say, well, I just kept them home on Friday to have a grandma day, or we went to do the plan for a week. And thinking that it's only kindergarten, it's not a big deal, when really it is a big deal because we want to start these good habits with school attendance. By sixth grade, chronic absence becomes a leading indicator that a student will drop out of high school. And by ninth grade, attendance is a better predictor of graduation than test scores. And it makes me wonder if we go back and look at some of our students who didn't walk across that stage, what did their attendance look like when they were in those early years? The image on the right comes from the Attendance Works website. And it is something that we really need to know and we need to educate our families about. And when we think about a 180-day school year, good attendance means missing nine or fewer days. So that would be 95% attendance rate. When students miss 10 to 17 days, they fall into that 90% attendance rate. And 18 or more days, just two days a month, is considered chronic absence, which is less than 90% attendance. And so the research shows that when students miss 10% of a school year, they don't build relationships as well as their peers and have those connections at school. They don't grow socially and emotionally, and they don't develop those math and literacy skills that they really need to be successful. So what we're learning is that attendance matters. It is really the foundation of everything we do. We've got to get them here in order to meet the rest of our goal. And attendance, we know that we want our students reading by third grade. And I know that Beth spoke about our goal in the early years of 80% of our kids being able to meet those reading and math standards by third grade. And this shows that kids, 64% of kids will read proficiently at third grade if they have good attendance in kindergarten and first grade. But if you move down those pencils, 41% of kids who are chronically absent in kindergarten for first grade will read proficiently by third grade. That number decreases by over half for students who have chronic absence in kindergarten and first grade. So it really does impact their ability to be academically successful in school. So what can we do about this? Attendance is hard because it often feels like it's out of our control and it's out of our students' control. And but we know that we can engage our families through positive proactive messaging. We really do need to educate them about the research and the importance of attending school regularly. Transportation is key. We've got to get them here, whether that's by bus or car. And then we need to address health needs. And we all know that mental health has become a top priority. A lot of our outreach is in terms of how can we support you and what resources do we have that we can connect you with? Because when we call parents about attendance, they're not exactly like running to come and meet with us because they feel like they're, you know, they're failing or not doing something right. So we really are trying to partner with them and just help in any way that we can. The last thing that we know we can do is track the right data. So rather than looking at everything globally and how are we doing at the district or a school, I really getting to the student level and which students are not at school regularly. So where are we now and how do we know? We have a couple of different graphs that we're going to give you some time to look at. But I want to explain what they are. This first set of graph shows average attendance in our school district. So this is elementary across the district and from kindergarten on the left in blue up to fifth grade in teal. The graph on the left shows September and on the right shows October. And so you can see that in September, we were just above 60% attendance. And then in October, that dropped below 60%. So we've got, all right.
What the next one?
Yeah.
Next one, and then we'll do a discussion.
And the second set of data that you're going to get shows each elementary building. And September, again, on the left, October on the right. And then you can look by grade level. So what we want to do is give you some time to take a look at the data. And what do you notice? What do you wonder? And there is an actual data table, I think, with your graphs, so you can see the numbers.
And so what we'd like you to do right now, so we naturally have a partner set here, and then we have a group of three right here. Would you please work with your partners? And we'll give you two minutes, and we're going to do a noticing and wondering. So what's one thing that you noticed from the data? And what's one thing that you wonder about from the data from these previous to the previous slide and this slide? So if you want to talk just briefly among yourself, and then we'll share back out in just a moment. Yes, if you need bigger, it is in the purple.
Okay.
Yeah.
Light size.
Right. It's bigger. There you go. Is that better?
Yeah.
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 Paul and Rick, if you need a bigger copy, it's a bigger size in the folder. Yeah. Okay, you're good. Yes. Let's make sure it's, yeah, the 50% means one or more absences.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's spend about 30 more seconds.
So I'm going to bring you back together. And from each group, would love to hear simply what's a noticing and what's a wondering that you have, given the data that we have shared with you so far. Recognizing again, I'm going to give you a little caveat. Again, this is baseline data. We have five years in terms of with the strategic plan. So we're really gathering baseline data, but we're trying to do something already. But would love to hear noticing and wonderings. What do you notice? And then what do you wonder about the information so far? Go ahead.
Okay. He wants to do them both. We'll do the notice and then the wonder, or you want to just do the notice and then?
Let's do notice. Let's do noticing first. Yeah, that's a good, that's a good idea.
Well, we noticed that in certain schools are consistently lower than the other schools.
Thank you. Yeah. What else do you notice over here? That's something that you've noticed.
We wrote ours down.
Well. I think poverty has a lot to do with it as well as I see kind of a pattern of the valley schools versus the schools on the north.
Interesting. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now, wonderings.
Well, our wondering was, how do these, how do the schools rank in achievement? And compare that to the lower schools in attendance.
Interesting, interesting comparison to make. Thank you. And any wonderings over here?
They do now. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I wonder how much you know, how much true lady, you know, true illnesses impacted kids this fall. I feel like, just from my own experience, we've had everything kind of a sudden in our classroom.
Yeah.
It's been really, really sad.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just how that, I'm wondering if we'll see improvements in the spring.
Yeah. Yeah. Really good question. Yeah, because there has been legitimate flu, RSV, norovirus, other viruses.
Yeah. Pink eye, but not to see.
Right. Right.
Yeah. But you can even see the difference.
We have one for.
Okay.
Are these schools, the ones that are, I mean, but are they more of the primary slash schools? Is there? What was that?
I'm not sure there's a clear pattern. Look at DEE versus DVE. Isn't that interesting that?
Well, they definitely, I know that one you're not saying. Maybe before you did. I'm not sure.
But they wrote it down.
They wrote it down.
All numbers are fading. That's why.
But it's an interesting wondering, right? And Deb?
Well, I was just going to finish by saying we really see the difference between September and October, which has a lot to do with what Erin said, worse illnesses. You first said that, oh, shelter or whatever, but then you look at October and across clearly.
Yeah, and we know Liberty Ridge and Daffodil Title I schools. Crestwood is actually a Title I school, not to the degree of the others, but likely some correlation there. And then I do think that, you know, we've had some true illnesses. And then we also have families that were trained last year to keep their kids home if they had a nipple or a sore throat. And so we're having to kind of shift the mindset of that now.
So it does make me wonder how this would compare to past data. Really, how different is this year versus September, October, around previous September and October?
And I was, I'm sure we can figure it out somewhere. We had no system for truly tracking and looking at it. And we, you know, for a couple of years now, we've said attendance doesn't really count. But I would love to look at it as well. But now we have a system and we'll be able to track.
It wasn't a task. It was just, yeah.
I was already looking for it.
Yeah.
Well, Erin, I appreciate your question of what do we do now? That's the big wondering, right? So keep us moving. There we go. So really, how will we get there is our next question. So Alicia, your team and our team of assistant principals have really done some work to try and answer. How will we get there? What will we do?
Yeah, the goal in the strategic plan is that by 2026, 95% of students will attend school daily. And looking at our current reality that we're right around 60%, we have some work to do. So as an elementary assistant principal group, we created a vision that students across elementary schools will be consistently engaged in learning by being at school every day on time. And we will achieve this goal through a systematic, consistent, MTSS approach, so these multi-tiered systems. Our system is similar to the stoplight we looked at earlier. But the green and the, just the green, actually, one A and one B, those kids are attending 90% of the time. Our tier two kids are, that's kind of our warning. So they're attending about 80% of the time, and then anything below that is chronic or severe. And just to put this into perspective, we just ran our November reports. And at Crestwood, I have 102 students following in that tier two and 32 students following in tier three in December. So we have students who have already missed 18 days of school. And so that's our work. So what we're doing is we are all running reports on the first of the month. And it gives us our overall attendance rate by school, by grade level. And then every single student is color-coded, and they fall into one of these tiers. And so then this guides us into what are the letters? We have common letters that we're sending to families, scheduling attendance conferences when we need to. And again, just trying to partner with families because this is not easy work. Some of the other things we're doing, you can see these students here have their great or improved attendance certificates. So we're trying to recognize students who are doing a great job. Include messaging in our newsletters regularly. And then we are partnering with Sarah and Beth and Kathleen to make this whole entire system work. So at the end of the day, we're trying to be more alike than different in our practices while still recognizing that our relationships with our kids and families are the foundation of this work. And so you can't always follow it step by step system in every case.
So what do we do when we don't get there? There are some steps that we can take. In other words, when we've got some families that need some support, we need to identify barriers. Alicia, what are some of the things?
Attendance Works provides us with a toolbox of different systems that we can use. Worksheets we can fill out with families and attendance conferences to learn what are the barriers, what kind of supports and resources can we connect you with? The calendar on the right is something we often have our older students fill out or they actually highlight their absences and their tardies so they can see that. And then we set goals and set up incentive systems. So again, the goal is to hopefully motivate them and get them here on time of the day.
So here's what's working well.
And again, we, at the elementary level, we are meeting every month. And we're talking about what's working well, what are the challenges we're having? We're adjusting as we go. Lots of training in partnership with our registrars as well. And just trying to focus on attendance more than we have in the.
And then opportunities for improvement.
And again, we've already mentioned this, but just really educating our families, bringing awareness to the importance of attendance and then their child's attendance every month. Communicating with families, especially families of early adult students, making sure that we have a way to reach them. And then all of the research just shows the importance of starting the communication early. So what are our preschools doing to communicate the importance of attendance? How can we incorporate this into kindergarten roundup and our jumpstart that we offer in the office?
In terms of cost and budget allocation, Attendance Works Resources, it's a research-based. It's a website, has a lot of the attendance research as well as tools that districts across the nation can use. And we've really utilized that particular resource. We're printing letters and materials, mailings, $10,000. And then we do have money in building budgets that have to do with PBIS attendance incentives. And so just supporting buildings with that as well in terms of incentives for kids. So that's bringing kind of to an end the attendance portion of things. Before we transition to our second goal and Dr. Larber, are there any particular questions or comments regarding the attendance? Because I don't want to lose kind of your thoughts in the moment regarding attendance. But some, I want to open that up just for a moment before we transition.
Well, on this particular slide, your cost budget allocation, I don't see any kind of earmark or potential staff trade. It's one thing for the, uh, assistant principals to be, uh, spearheading this and each of their, you know, campuses, but they're gonna need more help, it seems to me, than just, uh, themselves trying to do it. And so, uh, if they have some budget for, uh, team leads or something, I mean, it just seems to me, uh, a couple of, I don't know, as a parent, if I was already having a tennis problem and I just got a, something print as a little reminder, it'd go with the, probably the same place my bill reminders went, right? Not very conducive to encouragement to me. I already feel behind the eight ball. You know, now they're loading up on me at school, bill collectors are doing the same thing, I'm not real motivated. So it seems like we need a little more of a personal touch to engage those parents, let them know that, uh, it's important to their kids. And doggone it, we like you too. Some type of thing. And it takes a lot more than just some print material. Those are my thoughts.
I appreciate that, Paul, and, um, would love to go back. One of the things, um, that we didn't call out was if we look at these actions, um, you look at the registrar making those phone calls along with the letter. Look at tier two, you've got administrators and counselors. What I, I do understand and know in our buildings is that it's a team effort. Um, and, um, you know, Alicia, just in the month of, of November, you know, how many calls did you make? How many calls did your school counselor make and so forth? Um, and so I think you're right, that personal touch is huge because how often do we ignore either the email or the letter?
Right.
Yeah.
That takes extra time.
Yeah, it does.
Staff.
Yeah.
And getting up script together. You know, it's not easy to call somebody who doesn't necessarily have a phone call.
Yeah.
I believe that make done calling. It's, uh, phones down, so.
And one thing that is happening, I know at Daffodil, when they take attendance in the morning for students who are not there, teachers send a remind message. So it's said, scripted, and we send it out to parents right away, encouraging them to bring the chip.
So some of that stuff's already in place, that's good to hear.
But it is, we know that teachers are the best way to, you know, contact parents. Uh, they have the, the strongest relationship with the student. Um, and so if we can get teachers on board with this, then we'll have more success.
You said, or you said, like, this calendar that you said, you get that for older kids. I'm kind of like a medieval person, when you talk to me all day long, sometimes I'll get it, but if you show it to me, I'll see it, right? Do you ever give the parents, do they, do they see the young ones, the calendar? So it really sinks in a little bit more, or?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think that these are the things that we may all be doing a little bit differently still. And I right now have a, a kindergarten student and a fifth grade student that I'm meeting with the family, um, next week. And so the fifth grade student and I will go through and highlight the calendar. And that's a great idea to just do it for the kindergarten students' attendance so they can see it.
They see it and they realize that your data shows that you missed this midday by the time you're in high school, they're gonna make it. I mean, I mean, it's just more of a visual. I think it shocks you when you see it versus your.
Visual can be powerful, for sure.
Especially the tardies because those don't always show up on our absence reports, but we have kids that are tardy three and four days a week.
I really appreciate the different approaches, actually, because I think, like, any message you want to get across, you have to try various different kinds of avenues. So you might be visual, you might want
Under what I'm wanting every day.
I know you are, and you rarely like, but I think it also takes the written communication too. I think, unlike you, I, I always look at those and like, ooh, it's in writing now. That makes me nervous, so. Anyway, I just appreciate the different approaches.
All right, Chris, your overall question.
Yeah.
Um, your tier three, even maybe it's for your tier achievements, are there any connections to be made with family center? Yes, yes, for sure. Yeah, because once again, what a part of the process is identifying what are the barriers? And so, um, that is a key question. What is, what is it that is a barrier for, for you getting your child to school or, 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 or? Um, and so whenever there's, there's needs, the family service, for sure.
Our teachers are great. About reaching, oh, yeah.
Sure. Yeah.
Of course, transportation was one of your needs. And we had a parent right at the beginning of the school year come to the school board meeting and say, hey, I've had three calls in the past week, uh, there's not gonna be any bus service. So we know we're trying to do stuff that kill those bus drivers, but, the family center, then, can they get a voucher for the, I don't know, it's a double A or, you know, the taxi service? It kind of gets the kids around? What, what is it, some A and A transport or something?
A and A transportation, contractual transportation, actually primarily use it for out-of-district transportation versus in-district transportation. Yeah, and it's not a voucher, it's all, um, we have legal outreach for our students that qualify as, we need to go to a homeless and all our students who are in foster care, probably deeper than what we're going to tonight.
Right.
The transportation option, and we do it when we are legally required. But we have a lot of other ways of trying to be, and we, yeah, we talked about that.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, all right. Thank you.
Right. Well, I'd like to move us along, um, uh, because now we're transitioning into the second portion of our presentation. And so, uh, would like to, um, have Jeannie, um, uh, just talk with us now about kind of that social, emotional, um, safety and feeling safe and welcome at school because that's the goal. And so what do we need to know and be able to do? And so Jeannie, I'm gonna hand it off to you at this point.
So even thinking about this piece, it's really that perceived safety, as we know, students voice the critical. This is nothing new about anything I presented, but I'm gonna give you a quick overview, knowing I'm gonna stay here with you until nine o'clock. One of the pieces is really having that strong implementation of a multi-tiered system of support, specifically around social, emotional behaviors and mental health needs. That also increases, uh, cultural, positive cultural, culture and also, um, access to supports when students need it. Because often when kids, um, identify that they don't feel safe, there are some specific psychological supports that makes kids feel safe. And one is, you're gonna see in the data, has to do with, um, knowing an adult that can help them at school. The second piece is something we've talked about also last year, um, and went into detail that our state adopted the Conference of School Counseling Program and it is embedded and aligned with our multi-tiered system of support. So, so school counselors, just like in our behavior system, uh, what do we do for all students across all our buildings? What do our counselors do for all students? And then if students need more, what am I providing as a school counselor to meet those needs? And those are the students identified, um, needing those tier two supports. And then those students that need more, that tier three. It's very integrated, so I'm not gonna separate each one out. They're also com- That was fake. So what I want to show you is one of the pieces, um, this fall that Josh and I and Susan Van Gogh did is a baseline around what is our tier one students and what does it really look like? So we took some pictures and this always reminds me of when I go to the airport. I don't know if you've been to the airport, but they always have all these signs of what you need to do and it's always around safety, right? And those pieces. So thinking about this, these are just some examples of what a tier one intervention for school-wide might look like. Um, and what we do know is that we're at a place where we've had this system, but we've also had some obstacles that we need to continue to reboot. We have some really strong systems in, um, in most of our buildings, but we need to reboot. And that has been the focus this year. And again, around those same pillars, uh, B and professional learning and continuous improvement. So, um, part of that strategic plan was looking at this goal of a hundred percent students fill their school as safe and welcoming, measured by perception surveys. So the one perception survey of this CE, the survey was fourth graders to twelfth graders. And I broke them up into some specific things that support that safety piece because safety means different things to different people. So I might feel really safe in my classroom, but in the hallway with six hundred kids walking towards me, I might not feel as safe. So I might answer this in a multiple different, no, different ways. So a supportive learning environment is how I feel safe. Another one is do I enjoy coming to school? Because that's another indicator of feeling, um, safe and welcoming, that psychological safety and welcoming of students. This data, you're gonna have a chance to dive in, so don't worry. Um, another piece is that supportive learning environment. So here is key, does students feel like someone cares about them? So if you think back to your own experiences in school and who you felt connected with as an adult, and for me, it was a basketball coach, the teachers, I was probably spending so much time in the hallway that I didn't really have that same warm feeling from them. But thinking of that, there's someone in our life who was a teacher that cared about us. And that also helps with that psychological support and safety. And the last one is do I belong and have that belonging identity where there's someone I can talk to? I don't care if it's of gender, if, if a person who's a certain food, but in one, in this situation, at least one adult that I feel like I belong to. So thinking about the CE data, what I did is I'm also sharing other relationship data that is important for both our MTSS system and our school counselors that we look at all of this. And that brings us to our healthy youth survey, although we did not have, um, large amount of students taking it and I don't have, you know, you can see the ends are not real high, they don't totally match what our population is, not all students took it. But you can see, this is a typical question on our healthy youth. There are people from my school who can help me if I need it, similar to that CE data. So I want to point that out to you. Yes and no, I'm not sure. And a key piece that I want to share with you because of Cochran's and school counseling, in the last year, did you have contact with your school counselor? So what I want you to think of also, when kids' perception, did I have contact mainly, I'm sitting down with Erin, doing some kind of conversation, but they also sometimes don't identify that I'm in there providing a lesson on coping. So they're like, well, that's not really contact, she's teaching, right? So this may not be a true reflection, but I want to show you a true reflection from their needs assessments. So secondly, again, that piece, and then bringing in, um, the needs assessment. We've been doing these assessments, our school counseling program since two thousand and ten. This has been a common question, um, but the key of that is not just our school counselors, but they're also using help, uh, sharing this data with their teachers in their buildings. Because as you can see, this question, I'm an adult again, and names off lots of people. So in nine of our elementary schools, which was about eleven hundred and seventy, eleven thousand, seventy-seven students, ninety-five percent or ninety-six percent of kids, um, felt like they had someone. Again, that's that safety net that helps kids feel safe in their environment. In middle, ninety-four point nine, and in high school. We would like to see this a hundred percent because it will influence whether kids see themselves feeling safe in their environment. Another critical piece for our school counselors are, um, knowing which students, so our healthy youth, you don't know who those students are, our CE day, we don't know who the students are. Now I can dive in as a school counselor. I can see that those fifty-four students across our nine buildings, who are those kids that do not know that a school counselor is available for all those options? And that provides some, again, grandiose, grandular kind of looking at things and then doing some work around that. So you can see elementary, middle and high school. And then the last piece of data, um, that I want to share with you is what is called a tier fidelity inventory. How in tier one are we doing with some basic practices? So when you think of tier one, it's practices, the system, how are you implementing the system and then collecting data? This is one snapshot. So, um, Josh and I and Susan have gone to the buildings and we asked specific question. And you look at the left-hand side, it says, percentage of teachers or staff interviewed could state those school-wide expectations, what is safe, what is respectable and what is responsible? But you also think that we have Sumner way, so they can say that also, but they also have expectations to be able to say what those are in the building. So in twelve of the buildings, you can see that teachers were able to name ninety-one to a hundred percent of those school-wide expectations. And you can see by the numbers on the right-hand side that those were listed there, they could name them, and then how many taught? Well, some of the people we interviewed is realizing they didn't remember they even taught it. You can see that one building, that that was at ninety to eighty percent. But most people teach this and that's the consistency that we need in tier one to help our kids feel safe. We have to create the environment to help them know what are the routines, what's the expectations and how can we support them? So, the next piece is, we interview kids, random kids, and we did this without letting buildings know we're coming. And partly we did that because as we know, lots of buildings were like, that was great because we didn't prep our teachers because before they would prep their teachers and say, hey, Jeannie and Susan's gonna be in the building, here's what you need to be able to share, and even starting, there was no prep. So, same with our kids, they prepped them, they practiced the day before and we had really high walkthrough numbers. But as you can see, our students that we interviewed, two buildings were a hundred percent to ninety-one to a hundred percent. Two buildings were ninety to eighty, five buildings were in the eighty to seventy-one percent and then further down. So out of our fifteen schools, we've gone through every school. And then we asked the students, how many times were you provided, um, some kind of reinforcement or acknowledgement about your behavior? Because we know, um, not only do we have to have consequences when students are doing unexpected behaviors or behaviors that might hurt others or themselves, but we also have to have rewards for doing the right thing. Because just like me, I would probably not come to work if I only got who goes on my back. I need to get paid, right? And we all were in that same system, so we have to acknowledge kids when they're doing the right thing. So as you can see, those were the numbers in the building.
All right. So you've got, um, this information in the yellow folder. Um, and what I'd love to do is for you and your partner to choose one of the set of data, because we've got the CE survey, we've got healthy youth survey, the school counselor needs assessment and the TF. If you could decide just on one piece of data, and again, I'd like you to work with your partner for, um, just a minute or two on what is one noticing and one wondering, uh, given the data that you and your partner have chosen? And then we'll do a share out in the discussion. And then we'll do a share out in the discussion. Rick and Paul, do you feel like you've got one noticing, one wondering?
Yeah.
Sure.
Right.
Did you read him though?
You go through that.
Erin and Deb, do you feel like you've got one noticing? We'll get there.
You did.
It probably includes a wondering, is what I'm thinking. So yeah, all right. So we'll bring you back together. Um at this point, um when you share your noticing, wondering, make sure that you share which which um slide or which which portion of information, the data um are you referring to? So um let's start over here. Um we'll start first over here this time, if that's okay. Well, so what was your discussion?
One of the things we discussed was how this connects to attendance and how it not impacts. Yeah, you know, how they're feeling about school basically, you know, they're coming and um making those connections and having those relationships. And say versus not coming, not having those relationships, great connection.
Yeah. And you're hoping that in the work with attendance, identifying barriers, that hopefully that comes out as well. Um so you can start addressing. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Deb, anything or shall I move? What do you think? Go ahead. Okay, all right.
You want the noticing versus?
Sure, the noticing would be great.
Okay. Before the noticing, though, we do have a bonus and that was the surprise. Yeah. Which was this slide here about the, how many elementary kids knew they could go talk to a counselor? I already think back to my elementary school. I didn't even know we had a counselor.
Yeah, we probably didn't. Sorry. They weren't around then.
I thought this was an impressive slide.
Isn't that an interesting slide? And what I appreciate Jen, Genie pointing out is that now we're able to target in on who are those kids exactly? Because data is only good so far until you know who the kids are.
But our, our wondering, our notice.
Yeah.
And our wondering is both from this slide. This was the eighth, tenth and twelfth grade slide.
Healthy of survey.
The healthy use, where, you know, there are people from my school who will help me if, if needed, if I needed. And in middle school, it's eighty percent. And then it went down every year or every double year. So that was our notice. We were, I was.
It sounds like it should be the other way around.
Yeah. So yeah, so here's another piece about it's anonymous. And think about how people do, you know, surveys, right? It's different than the new session where every kid is recorded. So does that have an influence? So I always think of what, what might be impacting those or is it as I develop me age up? Do I not need so much help from people at school?
And since you made that comment, I'm going to interrupt. You know, this perception things that you did.
Yeah.
I'm not a believe, big believer in it. And I always wondered, why isn't there a follow-up somewhere where a kid could say, you know, maybe a why, why is it that, you know, seldom true or almost never true or sometimes true? Like, because I think that it just, it never, it really doesn't give you anything unless you know the why. And so that like, I've had this discussion over previous years about some perception service. And I always wanted to know, why isn't there a follow-up? On that, it would be pretty easy why.
That's like those global C or helping you, it's, it's, it's information. But when you can do something that has a counselor's be able to follow up with the name and, and have those, which they do pull in, have those conversations, what's going on? Here's how you answer that, totally able to get that information. They're all doing it at all levels. They've been doing it, but they're really intentional this year.
All right, shall we move on?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
All right. And then how we'll get there is again, based on some uh important principles around tactics. And one of the practices that we uh have this year, um we have tier one is the helm project. And that is from U Dubs Smart Center. And it's a research study and it's two groups and help projects around leadership implementation. And although both admin get a leadership portion, but not all of them get the helm strategies, which are seven specific strategies. They're all doing a relationship that is based on evidence-based practice called positive door greetings at the door. And there's components to that. Standing at the door, greeting with a name. Then also you can do a handshake. You don't have to. You can go high five. This is at all um K through fifth grade, what I was going to say. Um and then you give some kind of uh direction of what the entry task to help prepare that student for the day. The research, part of it was Clayton Cook's research with uh several other colleagues. But this research has been going on for the last ten years at different levels. So that's the helm project that really creates that intentional positive relationship known and valued. That's the key piece that we do have in place, but it's one of the normal things that we try to do is build relationships. We're just being really intentional at elementary. Um we do provide tier one system of support around social emotional learning in our advisory around coping around um even in elementary, our second step program that we've done for a lot of years. And you can see positive greetings and that te- teaching expectation was that tier fidelity walkthrough that gave you that information. We teach expectations and then we recognize or reward people when they're doing those positive um behaviors. And we're starting those practices of restorative practices, which could be including some circles. We're not there. We're still working on those. Um we continue to work on expanding our systems of mental health supports because we know that's important. And I'll tell you what's working well later. And increasing our student and uh parent voice, we are right now scheduling all our tier fidelity meetings with our buildings. And we go through this process of you have to have a student on there and you have to have a parent that's not part of your community. So if Erin in her building had a tier one pickup, she couldn't be representing that parent in that system. The second piece of that is our tier two, which is more targeted. And those interventions were again, having to use um or concentrating really on evidence-based practices for that. And using that screener, we used to show that data around screener of how many kids are internalizing, how many is externalizing and how many have a goal that are at risk. But really what that is, is just used to early intervention. They get to our buildings, we're having um conversations with our principals. We're wanting them to explore what kids are exhibiting those externally and internalizing that could be affecting them in the classroom that affects their activity. And then fidelity monitoring and of course, working on our professional learning. Done a lot of training this year, the most I've ever done. Um and I will continue to work on that piece. And tier three is again, that more individualized helping with um evidence-based practices. Fidelity and really coordinating with our families and our agencies and other systems of care. Because we know we have to do more wraparound services for our kids at tier three. And again, more training. One is next Monday again for our counselors. Tier three intervention. So how we get there is one is really, really looking at how do we evaluate our systems and identifying those gaps? Really working on our professional learning. We know these last few years, we've had um some habits that has not always been evidence-based practices and we're working on that. And we really need to keep thinking about how we're going to use professional learning to support. And Paul, I think you said that earlier, like, how do we train our staff? And we really need to train our staff around that mental health piece. We know that's a gap. And people know, need to understand and how to deal with kids who have no health challenges. Providing coaching and then always eliciting um student voice as well as parent. Because they provide us a very um different perspective that often is how it is for them. And then of course, the inquiry, uh the cycle of inquiry, making improvements. Here's the budget. The budget includes our prevention intervention specialist. They are um at our secondary buildings. They deal specifically around creating positive relationships with kids, but specifically around substance abuse. So that's alcohol, drugs and also vaping of prevention again and intervention. They are not counselors. They're not uh said licensed people, what is what is called that substance abuse disorder license. They are truly intervention specialists to help support kiddos. And today I had a student um interview with uh for a threat assessment. And he says, I meet with so-and-so at that school. And I'm like, you do? Do you know who that person, why you go to that person? No, but she's been my support person and it happened to be a prevention intervention specialist. We have a day and a half uh at each middle school, three days at our high school. And then they were part of the P C tax that came through. So we have gotten a free piece of that for four days a week, which has been fabulous. Buildings love that. Um and then secondly, other essentials that are needed for curriculum, um behavior dating is the other part of the budget. What's working well is really that integration of our counseling system with our M T S S. Good on O S P I to making that very intentional, giving us support in our district to help support our buildings. The helm project, which I talked about, really looking at gaps because we're rebooting and seeing some really great progress and things, but we have gaps and we'll get there. Um the other part I want to talk about is that community partnership. What we have added on this year is one, it's called, from the Department of Health, is called stepped up care. That started the last two weeks, um free service for our students eight through eighteen. It provides um trauma-informed, evidence-based trauma-informed uh intentional interventions for students and parents. So if I'm a kiddo that tech, that uh is screened in, that has significant trauma in the past and it can be even related to the pandemic, that myself and my parent have these intentional psychoeducation therapeutic intervention with clinicians at the U A D B psychiatric and behavior um services that they have there and their clinicians are interns. So they're clinical psychologists who are having to do so many hours. There are some of them are masters, but ninety percent of them are clinical psychologists. So that's been exciting. We added on Charlie's Health this year with a new um M O U. And they're also allowed to come into our buildings and that is still telehealth. But they're allowed to see students in the school setting where some students would not be able to have access to that. And they take private insurance. The key piece that we know is a gap is our students that have private insurance. Our kids that have state insurance are often called Medicaid, have more services. So we still have consejo that does Medicaid in four or five of our buildings. We have multi-care, but we have a new multi-care uh agency, which is called Greater Lake. And they have been excellent in follow-through and they are now taking commercial. So we're moving forward. And lastly, really trying to advocate for more support and services in our community. And uh that is still going well because I am not someone who will stay quiet until all our children get access. Um we are, like I said, I kind of said that the improvements of the same thing. I need to keep building community partnerships. That's the key piece. And another piece is parent awareness around multi-tier system of support and how it is built to support all children across our school district. There we go.
So at this point, that's the end, the second segment of our goal two. Um any um questions that you have um regarding those, that information and or the presentation in general? I'm gonna open it up um for a moment. I also know I'm watching time too. So um but um any last questions or um or notices or wonderings? If you'd like to engage in that as well.
Yeah, I have a question. You know, the tail end there, they mentioned restorative practices and then they, you know, kind of had it running all the way up to the three tiers. I have in my mind what I think restorative practices is, but I see it sometimes tossed around. And so sometimes I think maybe mine's maybe not as big a concept of what a stored practice. Could you tell us a little bit about what it is? Maybe give us uh an example, maybe a couple of examples. So you can see the broadness of it.
So do you want to do it, Josh?
And there's a presentation in whatever month.
Yeah.
Two or four. Yeah.
I guess we can wait till.
Tier one is really what do we do in the classroom to build those re- relationships? So that we can restore when um there's something that has happened that might need to be repaired. And that could be whether it could be something, an example might be, let's say I'm a kiddo and I'm not very self-reckless. And I throw my stuff across the room. How do I repair so people feel safe in that room? And one of the strategies is called circles. And having a voice and everybody has a voice and works towards um repairing relationships. A tier two might be a conference. I'm just going to give you an example where uh Dr. Dent and I have a conflict. And it might even look like a hip conflict because I'm picking on her, but we're really friends. But it's damaging our relationship. So we might get together, that counselor or admin, get us together and work out what's going on. So we now have a better relationship. So we're not also impacting everybody else. And tier three would also include that similar kind of conference that could happen. Um and any in those situations, you could include a multiple of around maintaining and restoring relationship. That's what restorative practices is around.
You're more involved for.
Yeah, yeah.
What's that?
Feel you're more involved for.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Yes, one of those things I hear and it's like, must be broader than I imagine. Uh so, thank you.
Yeah. Other comments, questions?
I guess my comment is I'm still shocked at the attendance. And uh I I put it on the parents a little bit, you know. Get to school here, but so I'm going to be interested to see in a couple of like, you know, months to come, what you guys are trying to do because you've got a lot of good data. You put a lot of work into it. You made this and looked really good. But I, I, I really give you the interest to see the change, if there is a change.
Thanks, Chris.
No, no, no pressure.
It's a lot of work to do that.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, you have a lot of kids that are trying to get to school and just trying to get one to school takes up a lot of time and energy um and resources too, so.
When I was a kid, I never missed school. I'm not sure I learned much when I was there. Yeah, never. I thought, I figured if I was shown up, I'd lose magic. Never missed.
I like the certificates. Don't under, ever underestimate power given an elementary school get a certificate. It hung on our refrigerator, perfect attendance. I mean, that was ragging rights all summer. Uh it would crush me when I'd be off school one day. But that meant I couldn't play outside too, so. But certificates really matter. I was best.
Well, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Good presentation.
Yeah, it was a great presentation.
Um we have any more discussions? None from Rex?
No, but I, I would like to say I like these patients when they give us kind of a whole student. Uh I don't think anybody was excited to see the attendance scores or the tennis record of it. It was surprising and but. It was surprising and but for them to be honest upfront, show us the data, tell us what they're, how they're going about to try to solve the problem uh or and improve student achievement and engagement with parents. I like the presentations around this place, I appreciate it, because I know it takes a lot of work.
Steady fissions of glory.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had that same thought, it's hard to put data that's not great. And I appreciate that, the beauty of it, you know, just acknowledging that this is the, this is where we can improve and what can we do to get there, so I, I had that as a thought.
Any other more discussion?
I just have like one thing from the underboard calendar in January, Karen for a real treat. Um because Karen Finnegan and Christine Nelson, I'm not sure who else is going to be here, but um her conventional, like DVR, um they're going to be here to talk to us about um transition services for our students um in different classrooms and it's going to be a really powerful presentation for you to hear. Uh thank you Karen for, this is kind of a last minute ad, but I just want to draw that to your attention, so. Um it's going to be, it's going to be fantastic, so.
I appreciate the time and share more information about that, you know, for me. People don't know, so.
That's what I like about this actually, you know, just going deeper into some things that we really don't know. And so I do really appreciate the information, the time it takes to put these together for them. Thank you all so much.
All right, anything else? All right, with that.